All right, we'll call the, uh, what is this? We'll call this the...
John.
I know, where am I? Where's my notes? We'll call, you know, what do we call on this? No, it's not. But we'll call this the Municipal Buildings Subcommittee to Order. Mr. Clerk?
Chairman Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Present.
Counselor Kennedy, too present.
Thank you. So tonight, we're gonna go over the report that was submitted from Chief Winwood on the fire stations, the conditions of the buildings, and some of the needs, and we're gonna have Chief Winwood go over the report and see what we can do with this to come up with a solid plan to start fixing up the buildings, get the washing machines in, that's another subject, and so we'll open it up with Chief Winwood.
Thank you, Counselor. So this is a brief report on some of the more critical issues on our fire stations. Altogether, we have ten buildings. We have eight fire stations, and then we have two closed stations. One is our Fire Prevention Office, and one is our Training Center out on Rogers Street. So the captains, there's a captain in charge of each station, and they've compiled some bigger reports, some more extensive reports. This is just kind of a brief overview of some of the most critical issues. So what I'd like to do is I've been working with DPW Commissioner Jim Donison and with Connor Baldwin, the CFO, to try to identify funding and to try to prioritize some of the issues. So if it's okay with you, I'll briefly go over the list and talk a little bit about each station. So the first station is our Lawrence Street Station, and our most critical problem is the concrete apparatus floor over at Lawrence Street. The station was built in eighteen ninety-one, and back then, the engines were, and the ladders, were pulled by horses, so it's, the trucks are a lot heavier than they were, obviously, back in the eighteen hundreds. On one side, there's a ladder truck that weighs fifty thousand pounds, and there's a big spot underneath the floor, near the ladder truck, that's corroded, the rebar is corroded, and that's my most critical issue I have right now in the fire station, so I'd like to get that one done as soon as possible. So the DPW has taken a look at it, and they've come up with a plan, and when we can identify funding, we'll take care of that, and then we'll move on to some of the other issues. Another big one at Lawrence Street is the chimney. It's in the middle of the building, up on the roof, and the mortar has worn away between the bricks. So one of the bricks fell off, and, you know, it can be a danger to anyone walking by or anyone out in the parking lot. So that's another one that we'd like to get done right away. It's difficult to get at. The Logan lift that the city has doesn't reach up to where the chimney is, so a lift would have to be rented, and the chimney would probably have to, the top of the chimney would have to come off, be rebuilt and then repointed. It may not be on this list, but the two driveways over there are in very poor condition. It's a hazard to people walking. When they plow the driveway, more of the old concrete gets ripped up, and that's another issue over at Lawrence Street. And then there's a, there's kind of a minor one, there's a fence on the side of the driveway that's leaning over, and once again, it's a hazard, and that one should be repaired as soon as possible. So that's the number one priority, the Lawrence Street Station. The second priority is the Brandt Street Station, again, built in the eighteen hundreds, it was built in eighteen seventy-seven, and there's an issue with the floor there as well. In a lot of the older stations, the floor drains don't work very well, so the water has been collecting over the years, there's some cracks in the floor. So the water's leaked down into the basement, and it's corroded one of the columns severely and one of the beams severely. So we had an engineer look at it, and his recommendation would be to replace at least one of the columns and a section of beam that's rotted, and also get the floor drains repaired so that the problem doesn't continue again in the future. Also, at Brandt Street, the windows and the frames are in poor condition, and they could use replacement. The third most critical station is, I kinda have it in reverse order on the list here, it'd be Old Ferry Road. The roof at Old Ferry Road's been leaking for a long time, and it needs to be replaced. It's been patched and repaired over the years, and it's at the point now where it needs a new roof. And because of the leaks in the roof, some of the interior of the station's gotten damaged, the electrical room, the hallway, the bathrooms. There's, there was some new work done in the kitchen, and one of the cabinets got damaged from water leaking in. We get ice dams in the winter, so it's been leaking for a long time, and it's definitely one of our priorities to get that roof fixed over at Old Ferry Road. The restrooms could use some work over there, some updating. There's some rust on the walls, and the floors are in poor condition. So that is our third priority, the Old Ferry Road Station. The next one is West Sixth Street Station. We recently did have some work done in the basement over there, we had a sewer backup, so an environmental company came in, cleaned out the basement, and they cleaned the floor down there. We do have some other issues over there. We have an old boiler in the basement that's covered in asbestos, and we need to have a company come in and abate that asbestos and remove the old boiler. There's some electrical issues over there, they could use some updating. They have a new hot water tank in the basement, and there's a, there's an extension cord that powers that hot water heater, that should be, that should be wired properly. There's also some exposed wires down there, down in the basement. The exterior walls over there are made of brick, and there are some points where the mortar has eroded and needs to be repointed on the outside of that building. Some of the windows over there, most of the stations have some of the windows that are old and don't work properly, and the frames, some of the frames are rotted. The door over there needs to be repaired, the front door doesn't close and seal properly, so there's heat leaking out in the wintertime, and that needs to be repaired. And like I said, the captain at West Sixth Street's come up with a very extensive list that we could perhaps look at moving into the future in future years. So the next station on the list is JFK Civic Center here on Moody Street, and once again, we've got a problem with the floor drains, they don't work over there, so in the wintertime, when the trucks come back and they have snow on them, the snow melts, the water builds up on the floor, and, you know, it's a danger to the firefighters, their gear gets wet. So those drains need to be replaced. It's a pretty big job over there, it's built on a slab, so there's been different options that we've talked about, but, you know, digging up part of the floor is gonna be part of it, and it's very thick, so it's gonna be a pretty extensive job, but that, that's been a problem for a number of years over there. In the kitchen, we're hoping to get a commercial kitchen sink and some new plumbing done and replacement of some of the cabinets that are in poor condition in the kitchen over there. In the restroom, some of the tiles have fallen off the wall in the restroom and shower areas, those need to be replaced. The apparatus floor where the trucks park, there's six heaters there, and they're all the, five of them do work, but they only work when the temperatures get down to about thirty or forty degrees. And this past winter, when it got really cold, they weren't working well enough to keep the trucks warm enough. Some of the trucks have water in them, so it's important to keep the trucks warm when they're, when they're inside the garage. I have another one that didn't make the list, the poles over there, the people slide from the second floor down to the apparatus floor. They have covers around them, and those plastic covers are broken, and they help keep the cold air out of the living area, so those need to be replaced.
Some of those in the firehouses that we visited didn't have them, so...
Some of the older stations have like a box built around it, and there's a door, you open the door and it went and slide down, so that helps with the heating and the air conditioning. But the Civic Center was built in nineteen seventy-two.
Right.
It was a different method then, they have these, these plastic covers that...
Yeah, I saw that.
And some of them are broken, so those need to be repaired.
Okay. So on Lawrence Street, was that wide open though, up there? It was kinda, it was in like a little closet?
Yeah, it's in like a little closet type of a thing?
Yeah, okay, so that doesn't, you don't lose too much heat?
No, that's, the door helps out with the heat a little bit there.
Okay, all right.
There were a couple of other issues that I skipped over on Lawrence Street the day that you and I went over there, Counselor, there were, there was an issue with the bathroom upstairs, there was water leaking out, and it damaged the floor on the first floor ceiling. So that's another issue that didn't make this original list on Lawrence Street. One other issue with the JFK Civic Center, we have some female firefighters at work at the Civic Center now, and there should be a separate shower area for males and females. There's only one big shower area, so at some point, we'd like to add another shower somewhere. So next on the list is the Gorham Street Station. The kitchen floors over there need to be replaced, the flooring itself, as well as the subfloor. There's some areas where the refrigerator is and where the sink is, they're kinda sinking, so that needs to be ripped out, there's been some leak, some leaking over the years. So the subfloor and the flooring need to be replaced over there. The apparatus floor, once again, where the trucks park is very old, and part of it's starting to crumble, so that needs to be repaired. The reinforcement underneath, the columns underneath need to be looked at, and the floor itself should be sealed and perhaps painted or somehow sealed so that the deterioration doesn't continue into the future. And then the basement over at Gorham Street, we need to have a company come in, a cleanup company, and there's some asbestos down there, there's old coal, there's leaking oil tanks, there's a lot of general debris, and that basement, as well as a couple of the other ones I mentioned with the asbestos, need to be cleaned out by an environmental company. The next one is High Street. Some of these items on the list have been repaired over at High Street, the kitchen floor was repaired, the plumbing under the kitchen sink was repaired, the heater on the apparatus floor was replaced. The only issues that we saw over there were a few of the windows were cracked, and the front door needs to be replaced. So those are pretty minor items, we should be able to get those done fairly quickly.
Excuse me, so on, didn't we have some, we have some trim missing in the back, right?
There was some trim missing in the back also, over at High Street, and the basement could probably use a clean-out, but I don't think we'd need a clean-out company for that, we might be able to get the DPW to help us out with that.
Okay. And how did the repairs get done over there? Was that like on a waiting list and maybe it jumped?
Yeah, the lands and buildings people took care of the items in the kitchen, and they purchased the heater also on the apparatus floor and put that in.
Okay.
I believe it came out of the...
I guess now we have an order of priority, but I'm just wondering how, why we went over to High Street versus going over to Lawrence Street or Gorham Street, so I'll ask that after.
Yeah, it was probably because it was kind of a minor item, and I think it came out of the budget for lands and buildings.
Okay.
The Lawrence Street project is gonna be a lot more money.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Stevens Street, the stucco on the outside of the building needs to be repaired, and some painting needs to be done on the interior, walls, ceilings, as well as the exterior. And there's a couple of other items that didn't make the list over there. Many of the windows need to be repaired or replaced, especially in the basement, some of them have cardboard over areas where the window's broken and some rodents are getting in. And the flooring needs to be repaired and replaced in the, in the living area over at Stevens Street. The flooring is in very poor shape.
Okay.
And that was it for Stevens Street. The Fire Prevention Office on Mammoth Road, it needs an awful lot of things, and that's probably our worst building, and, you know, we're looking at some options right now where we might be able to move the office to another location.
Yeah, I think that might be the best thing for over there, so we'll continue to work on looking for a new location.
For the short term, I know the city's lift is over there, and the lands and buildings is gonna try to repair some of the openings to keep the birds out of the attic in the basement.
Okay.
Just for a, for a short-term thing.
Yeah.
So our other building is our Training Center on Rogers Street. The tiled roof over there needs some repairs, there's some leaking going on there, and the eaves around the roof, some of those are rotted and need repair. There's a couple of interior concrete block walls that have pretty big cracks in them, those need to be repaired. The furnace in the basement, there was some water down there, and it corroded the bottom of the furnace, so the furnace is gonna need to be replaced. There's some windows over there that are cracked, and there's a door that's pretty old, that, you know, just a regular front door that needs to be replaced. Then there's a metal grate on the apparatus floor that's damaged, and the cars drive in and out of there, and that, that needs to be replaced so it won't damage any of the cars. And there's a couple of other items over at the Training Center that didn't make the list. There's a sump pump in the basement that's not working properly, it needs to be replaced. And there's a bulkhead that's rotted that needs to be replaced. That station was built in nineteen twenty-four, so the bulkhead's pretty old, and that could, that could use replacement as well.
Now, let me interrupt for a second. Would you say that that might be a place where we could relocate, like, it might be worth it to?
If we could find a big...
Add another municipal building?
Yeah, if we could find a big location, we could possibly locate the two, the Training Center and Fire Prevention. You know, some...
That's kind of a nice building, if we could sell that and somebody developed it, it might be, you know, worth something, but if we have you stay there and do all these repairs, you know, it might be worth it to see if we have anything, any inventory where we could move you. What type of training do you do there?
We do EMS training, we have classes out there, we have multi-company drills out there where we drill on firefighting, different rescue techniques.
It's kinda, it's not the most ideal place, right, would you say, or?
Yeah, it's a little bit out of the way, and I would think both, both that station and Mammoth Road would be worth a lot of money to a developer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So as I said, that's kind of a brief overview of some of the most critical problems at some of the stations, and the captains have written a more extensive report with some photos. I can email that to the Subcommittee tomorrow. Another issue we have is backup generators. We have eight stations. The Civic Center down here has a backup generator that backs up both the police station, the fire station, and this building. Our other stations do not have backup generators. So I talked to George Rose in Emergency Management today, and he's gonna pursue a possible grant from MEMA where we may be able to get some grant funding to add backup generators to the, to the other stations.
And what size generators are you talking for, for a building like that, like a permanent one, not a...
Probably a permanent one, that would come out automatically, it would test, you know, once a week, it would have a diesel tank or a gas tank. The one over here is a pretty big one, and they're, they're pretty expensive, but if we can find some grant funding for that, that might be a good option. And we may start with the, some of the houses have two trucks, an engine and a ladder. We may start with the double houses, and then go for the single houses, maybe, maybe next year.
Okay. All right, and then one other quick thing. We've got motions on tonight, but the extractors, you call them?
Yes, the washer machine, the heavy-duty washing machine extractors. Currently, we have old residential washing machines in the stations, and we've got funding through the capital plan last year to buy eight new extractors. So we have one up and running at the Civic Center, and then we have two others that have been delivered by the, by the company that sells them, but the plumbing and the electric hasn't been hooked up yet. And I'm putting them in one or two at a time so that we don't remove the old one and not have a washing machine while we're waiting for the others to get hooked up.
Sure. All right, and so that's three that we have...
We have three installed, and we have funding to get five more, so we'll have one in each station so we can wash the turnout gear after a fire, and they can, the firefighters can use their second set of turnout gear while the first set is drying to get some of the carcinogens off the turnout gear.
All right, and where do we get the money for the extractors again?
Through the capital budget last year.
All right, so have those been ordered or purchased, or?
We got a purchase order for seven. We already purchased one last year, so we have a purchase order for seven, and we've had two out of the seven delivered. So we bought, basically, we bought three of them, and we have, we're purchase order for five more.
Okay, but we haven't physically bought them yet.
Just three of them, that's correct. The other five, we have not physically bought yet, and I know the state's looking into some possible funding.
Yeah, that's what I asked, yeah, so...
I'm just not sure how long that will take.
Okay, well, it's worth looking into if it's...
Absolutely.
If it doesn't work for us, it doesn't work, so...
Sure.
Okay, all right. Any questions, Counselor Cirillo?
Um, yes, I see that you have number one, two, three, you have these items numbered. I'm sorry, can you tell me again what their, are these numbered in order of the, this, this item is critical, or is it just you numbered, so the numbers, are they, like, number one, is that the most critical on this, this sheet?
It is. The numbers indicate the priority, and the real critical ones are up at the top. Obviously, the floors where the trucks park are the most critical.
Right.
We don't wanna see a bad accident happen.
Oh, absolutely.
So yes, and if you see a letter next to the number, it's, there's more than one of that issue with different houses, like A, B, C.
Right.
Like windows, for example, a lot of the houses have some window issues.
Right.
And then next to each house, I wrote the year that it was built on the left.
Yes.
And as you can see, these houses are pretty old.
Yeah.
And then, you know, moving forward over the next, you know, ten, twenty years, the stations are gonna continue to deteriorate, so, like I said, the captains have designed a more extensive report for each station, and I think, long-term, we need to look at maybe doing some extensive repairs or possibly building some new stations if there's funding available.
Right, right. Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Chief, have you done a cost estimate on what all this would cost? If we were to go and do all the repairs of all the stations or everything that you've got on this list, do we know how much it would cost?
It's kinda difficult. If city employees do the work, it's obviously a lot cheaper than if we, if we send it out to bid. I have been meeting with Jim Donison, the DPW Commissioner, to try to come up with some estimates, and, you know, perhaps, perhaps we can take another look and come up with some real estimates.
Well, I think it would be good to have some cost estimates for the total, obviously, but also for the individual stations, and then...
Sure.
I mean, this is, it probably wouldn't be that we would do all eight all at once...
Right.
But would the stations could then be prioritized, and we'd at least know how much it was gonna cost going forward to do one or two a year, say, you know, to get everything done?
Yeah, I have been meeting with the DPW Commissioner, we'll see if we can go up with some, some concrete numbers, and I can present that to the Subcommittee.
How long do you think that will take to do that?
I would think we could get it done in pretty, pretty short order, probably a couple of weeks.
Okay. Do you have, how do we heat the stations? Are they all gas heat, or are they oil heat, or how are they, or are they different?
They are different. I know down here, I think both of these buildings are heated the same way, through gas. Most of them are gas heaters. Down here, we have two different systems. We have a big gas heater that heats the whole, the whole building, and then we have individual heaters in each room, heaters and air conditioners. And then on the apparatus floors, we often have heaters that are hanging from the ceiling that are gas-fed, and the doors are opening and closing all the time, so it's kinda difficult to heat some of the apparatus floors.
Right.
Some of the, some of the stations also have the old radiators, like we see here.
Okay, so is it, do I understand that all of them have gas heat, and that some might have backup systems as well, but that the primary heating source would be gas?
Yeah, most of them are gas, with the older houses have the, have the radiators. Next door, the building is so big, there's different areas that are heated kind of differently. I think there's a chiller in the basement of the Civic Center that heats that whole JFK Civic Center.
Okay.
It's a forced hot water system, and it's run by gas.
And do all of the gas, all of the fire stations have air conditioning, at least in the living areas?
Some of them have window air conditioners. The newer ones, Old Ferry Road and the Civic Center, have central air, but one of the Civic Center is currently not working.
Okay. Would it be, do, do any of them have solar panels, or would solar panels make sense, do you think, on, on, on those buildings?
I know some of the buildings in the city have solar panels, I don't believe any of the fire stations do. I think some of the schools, five of the schools, the auditorium, the water department, and I believe that, that energy that gets generated goes back into the grid, and the city's given a discount on the, on the, on the electric bill. As far as heating the actual station, I don't think there's too many of those solar panels around here that would actually heat the building where the panels are located.
No, neither do I, but like with the schools, we'd be able to sell it back into the grid and maybe save money. I mean, I, you know, you would know better than, better than I whether or not those stations have, the roofs have enough surface area and how they are in order to make that be a viable thing to do.
Yeah, possibly it's some of them, like down here at the Civic Center, it's a flat roof. Some of the older ones are very steep, it may not be plausible, and they have the slate roofs, but I could certainly sit down with Jim, Jim Donison and go over those details and get back to you on that.
Okay. And the stations where there's a problem from the, from the pole, the slide-down pole, right? What do you call that pole, the slide-down pole?
Firefighter's pole, I guess.
Firefighter's pole. There's a way that they trap the heat upstairs, is that, and that's what's broken?
Well, down here at the Civic Center, there's, there's plastic doors that kinda, kinda go up and down.
Okay.
And they're broken, so the cold air from downstairs comes, comes upstairs.
Have they been broken for some time?
They have.
Okay. Are there stations that were costing an exorbitant amount to heat the station because of items like that?
I believe there is, and if, you know, some of the windows got replaced and some of the heating systems got updated, I think it would save money in the long run on the heating bills.
Okay. Do we keep the heating bills separately, month by month and by station? Do we, do we have it like that?
We, we pay a gas bill each month, but I can, I can get your breakdown of what it costs to heat the stations and...
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is it might be worthwhile to take a look at the recent history over the past few years of the stations and see whether or not the heating costs have spiked in any of those stations, and maybe there's problems there that should be addressed more immediately.
Sure, I'll take a look at that, and I would imagine replacing things like doors and windows and some of the pole hole openings would certainly help, and I'll take a look at that and see if I can get you some numbers on that as well.
Okay, and I think the final thing, you talked about the, the Training Center, isn't there a Training Center down in Sudbury? Or is that a state Training Center or something like that?
The Mass Fire Academy is in Stowe, and we send our new firefighters down there. Right now, we have a group of five down there for eleven weeks, and they get basic firefighting training down there. And then we also have classes where people can get certified as hazmat technicians and different, you know, new techniques. But on a daily basis, we have drills in the city, and we have a training captain that organizes different drills, and we train on different firefighting techniques, you know, water rescue techniques, automobile extrication, all different, all different techniques. EMS, we do a lot of EMS training for about half of our firefighters are EMTs, so we have to take continuing education classes, and we hold some of those out of the Training Center. Our new employees, we train them in first aid and CPR. We just train, once a year, we have to retrain everyone in CPR, we just completed that out of the Training Center.
Okay.
So it does get a lot of use out there. So we have a training captain out there, we have an EMS lieutenant that coordinates all the EMS training, and she keeps track of the Narcan and the oxygen and the medical supplies, and hands them out to the different companies as necessary. We have a public education officer that works out there, and he works with the kids in the schools. He has a safe house that he brings around and teaches kids about fire safety and about some of the perils of the drug, opiate epidemic that we have going on. So we do use the building quite a bit for, for different training activities.
Okay, so I guess that's really what I was getting at, is whether or not we might be better off just to utilize the Stowe facility when we can rather than to have our own Training Center, but what you're saying is that for smaller training sessions on an ongoing basis, we, we need to keep this Training Center open?
Yeah, the Fire Academy in Stowe, we only use sporadically. New firefighters, you know, people might get on there a couple of times a year for different classes, but we use the Training Center pretty much every day of the, every day of the year for different training evolutions.
Does everybody use that facility in Stowe just occasionally? Does everybody use that facility in Stowe just, um, occasionally?
Well, all new firefighters pretty much in the state now get trained down there. And it's funded by, uh, by, by fire insurance on people's homes, so there's no cost to the communities. But every day there's, there are other classes going on down there as well and, you know, different, different techniques, hazmat, different firefighting techniques.
Okay, and so is there a continuing ed program that we need to follow? In other words, are the, are the people that need to get recertified for EMT, I guess, in other, uh, in, and in other areas from time to time? Is that the case?
They don't do any, uh, EMS training down at Stowe. Most of the communities do that.
Oh, I understand. They do that locally, but do we, do other types of training that, that, um, that's required in order that firefighters gets recertified periodically?
No, there's actually no required training that goes on at the, at the Fire Academy.
Okay, do you think it would be a good idea if there was? I mean, I understand that you and I aren't gonna decide that there's going to be, but do you think that would be a good idea if, if there was that?
We, we don't have a lot of funding for, uh, for, for a training budget, you know, send people down there, run their, on their days off. And then during the, during the week firefighters are, are on duty and there'll be three people on a truck and they'll go out to a drill and if they get a call, they can respond to that call. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a more cost-effective way of training people to do it here in the city. When you send people down there, they're, they're gone pretty much for the day.
Yeah.
And you'd almost have to send them on their day off and either pay them overtime or comp time. So it's a lot more cost-effective to, to do it in-house. And we have a lot of, a lot of experienced officers in the city. We have an experienced training captain that, uh, that run these drills. We have a deputy chief that's in charge of training. So we can do a lot of our training in-house. We go out on the river with our boats and we train locally on that. It's, uh, it's something we've been doing for a long time and it works, works pretty well.
Okay, thank you. I know I would be, I'm looking forward to seeing the cost estimate on each one of these and I'm sure probably the rest of the Subcommittee is as well.
Yeah, we could probably come up with different numbers for, uh, in-house versus, uh, subcontracting out different jobs. Some of them have to be subbed out and I know the people in lands and buildings are very busy. So it's, it's difficult for them sometimes to do the real big jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just one thing. So to go on what Counselor Kennedy was saying, would it be worth it for Lowell to have a Training Center here? I know that you said some of the, so someone's gotta get, you get paid through funds of, through the insurance companies, but would that be something that might be, uh, work here in Lowell?
Uh, I don't think it would. I know Boston has their own Fire Academy. They, they hire a lot of people every year. And, you know, but most of the classes have maybe thirty or forty people in them for the, for the new recruits. And in Boston, it kinda makes sense. Here in Lowell, we might have, hire an average of between five, five to ten, maybe fifteen.
I mean, regionally, what if we did, you know, Lowell, Tuxbury, Chelmsford, Barriker, you know, Wilmington, Wilburn, spread it out that way?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be quite an undertaking. I know the state, the state government runs the Fire Academy and they just opened a second facility out in Springfield for the people in the western part of the state.
Yeah.
But, uh, to be competing against the state Fire Academy wouldn't really make a whole lot of sense. I know with the police, different communities have, like in Lowell, they have their own, uh, police academy. But in the fire service where it's run by the state, it, financially, I don't think it, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to get money from the insurance companies, I wouldn't think, to run our own academy that would compete with the state.
Yeah, okay, and then the other thing, um, we were talking about gas, you know, most of the firehouses might be using gas to heat. We should look into if there's any programs with National Grid, you know, that would help replace, um, the furnaces. Uh, and then maybe that might tie into something like Mass Save where we could get energy audits for the houses and see where we need to go for, you know, windows, doors, things like that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I can check with Susan Griffin over at National Grid and see if she can point me in the right direction on that.
Sure, okay.
I can follow up on that.
Yep.
Okay, um, Counselor Serrano?
Yes, um, I'm really interested in seeing the cost estimates for each building also because I know you have Lawrence Street first as being, um, the, the station that is in most need. But once you get into looking at the different needs of the different stations, you might find that, say for example, West Sixth Street, um, near and dear to my heart, might have some big-ticket items that is gonna cost more. So I'm, I'm very, very, uh, interested in seeing the cost estimate. I think that's gonna bring out a, um, a lot of information that, that, that we can move forward with.
Sure.
And, um, and I'm also excited about, uh, seeing, I, I know that for solar to be on a roof, it's generally south-facing roofs or, um, you know, on a flat roof, you can actually lift up the solar panel, um, to face the south. So, uh, so I think that there is that, that opportunity for us to, to alleviate some of the gas with solar. So I, I agree with, um, Counselor Kennedy as far as that's concerned. So, um, so that's just what I wanted to add and thank you.
Okay, I'll certainly look into the solar panel option and see if we can save some money that way as well.
Yeah, um, Mr. Donaldson couldn't be here tonight, but, you know, let's look into, I know you prioritize them, but let's look into, uh, you know, um, the floors, the roofs, uh, windows, doors, and then electrical, like you had mentioned, um, electrical in one of the houses.
Sure.
You know, that shouldn't be a problem. That should be, we should be able to take care of that pretty quickly.
And when the city electrician, uh, hooks up the, the extractors, maybe we can get some electrical work done at the same time. And, and as far as the roofs, I know three of the stations have gotten new roofs over the past five years or so.
Yeah.
And there have been some projects that have been completed over the past five to ten years, but the stations are very old and they, they really do need a lot of attention.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a lot of room in the city to, to move houses around and construct new buildings on open lots or anything. So we've gotta renovate the, the buildings we have. Um, but I'm more concerned with trying to keep up with the work, you know?
Right.
Some of the electrical work, um, you know, that really shouldn't be difficult. I don't know why we're not keeping up with that. So we'll have to get a, you know, sit down again with Mr. Donaldson, figure out what we can do immediately, what we need to get, um, uh, some pricing on. And some of the drain work too. I mean, if we just close up the, the drains and run a new, new drain, maybe that's, you know, just the bad way to go.
Yeah, I know the Civic Center drains are gonna be very expensive, but some of the other houses have basements under them.
Right.
And it, it, it's gonna be a little bit of an easier job, I think.
Yeah.
But it's important to keep the water from dripping down into the, into the basement and, you know, destroying the building.
Yeah, so, and we did tour, I don't know, six or seven buildings, so, um, we should be able to prioritize getting the basements cleaned up. Um, if we need to open some windows to get some ventilation going through there to dry them up too, that'd probably be a good idea.
Yeah, we don't wanna develop any mold issues, so the ventilation's important in some of the older basements still.
Okay, so when, we'll meet again, but we'll start working on this with the manager and, um, DPW and see where we can go from here and maybe, um, in the fall we'll, uh, meet again and, and get an update on where we are.
That sounds like a good plan, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, um, you mentioned on a, a few of these stations that there's, the floor drains are broken. Why does that happen with?
I know over at the Civic Center, uh, it's built on a slab-
Yes.
And the floor is very thick. It's like over a foot thick. And, uh, we're not really sure what's going on underneath the floor. We, the theory is that the, the, the drains have crushed over the years. And, uh, there's a lot of sand on the trucks and they wash the trucks every day, so a lot of the sand's gotten washed into the drains over the years. And, uh, some of the other stations, like I said, there's a basement underneath them, so you can get a look at them and, uh, you know, they're just very, very old. And I'm sure they've got sludge and, and sand in them from, from, you know, years of use, over a hundred years of use. But some of the, some of the stations that are built on a slab, it's kinda difficult to tell. You can't really see what's going on. We did have a company come in and, and try to take a look at the Civic Center drains with cameras and they, they got to a point where they couldn't see any further, so the drains are either completely clogged or they're crushed. And then, uh, over there when they rebuild, today, today's codes say that you have to separate the oil from the water. So we have to have an oil separator put in underground, so it does get a little bit expensive.
Okay. Thank you. When did, um, who went on the tour and when did the tour take place?
Uh, Counselor Lady came out on a tour a couple of weeks ago. I know Counselor Samaras has come out and looked at some of the stations and you're certainly welcome. If you wanna, you know, give me a call, we can certainly go around and take a look. Counselor Serrano, did it up?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, um, it was kind of a short-notice thing, so I, I should've notified you two. Um, I just kinda didn't know when my next available time was. I'm getting ready for the Subcommittee. So I just went over on a Friday and we looked at a few of the houses, so, but we can set up another one, um, anytime. The Mammoth Road one was like the most urgent need to get people out of there. It's, the basement's awful, the attic's awful and the birds are everywhere, so.
Yeah, the stairs leading up to the second floor where the offices are are very steep. And people go in every day from the public to get permits and to get, to drop off plans and it's, uh, it's kind of a dangerous stairway. And if someone's handicapped, they can't really climb up the stairs. It's not, I would, I would say it's not ADA compliant.
I was gonna say, so that's, there's, there's probably a code issue there with those stairs.
There is and, uh, there's talk at the state level that, uh, as of February next year, Massachusetts is gonna become an OSHA state where we, we'll fall under OSHA regulations.
Right.
So getting some of these repairs done will, will probably save the city money in the long run.
Right.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Thank you, Chief, for coming in and, uh, we'll get working on this.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out today.
You're welcome, Counselor.